Okay, so now we got a quorum.
All right.
You want to start the preamble?
Since we have a quorum, we'll go ahead and start with the preamble before getting into the meeting. Good morning, everyone. So in compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law under COVID-19 emergency declaration, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of City Planning Department conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting have the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raised hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raised hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raised hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the web screen of the WebEx screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. We have provided a link to the meeting for those who wish to speak on a particular case via our website and email. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. So with that, I will turn it over to the commission to begin the meeting.
Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Flucker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Slade.
President.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The first is special presentation, public art, Space Jam mural seeking final approval. Who's here for this?
Good morning, Commissioner Tara Petras, Public Art Coordinator for the city. This first presentation is the Space Jam mural, which is proposed for Warsaw Park and Ward 12, Councilman Brancatelli's ward. We were initially approached back in the fall about putting a mural on a basketball court, as you know, from an approval from a couple of weeks ago, that this is the city's second basketball court that will be getting painted. We were initially approached about Barkwell Court, but after some discussion with the Public Works Director, we thought that Warsaw Park would be a better fit based on the condition of the court and recent improvements to the court. So the artist, Terrence Hubbard, who goes by Hub T., has the backing and support of Slavic Village Development Corporation, who's serving as his fiscal agent. He did receive a grant from, I believe, Spaces, and Terrence will correct me if I'm wrong, but he received a grant from Spaces to do a painted basketball court somewhere in Cuyahoga County, and that court artwork happened to land with us at the city. So we are working on a license agreement. It is not in a design review district, and with that said, I'm going to turn everything over to, oh, before I turn it over, this also had enthusiastic support from Director Cox. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Terrence Hubbard and Joe Linsky from Slavic Village to go through the presentation, and I'm very supportive of this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, Tara, and for all your help with this process. So I'm Joe Linsky with Slavic Village Development, and Terrence Hubbard is on here as well. I'll let Terrence give a little bit of background on himself. Next slide, please.
Um, thank you, Tara and Joe, and for everybody I haven't met yet. My name is Terrence, and I've been an artist since probably birth or since I can remember. And then I led on to high school, which kept me interested because I began taking art classes. Then I later on continued at Kent State University in about 2007 for about three semesters. Then I decided I was finished and started to travel. Uh, travels consisted of activism and creating art, which I do, and helping people. Upon coming back home, I enrolled myself back into college at a school out in Utah, and I'm back in for graphic design. And I hope to graduate next year. So that's a little bit about me. And a little bit how the project started in July 2019. I was in a transition period of like making art my career, and I guess upon some research, I found a satellite fund and I applied. And thankfully, I've been a student in the Stu Spaces Gallery and the Andy Warhol Foundation. So that's that. And the original plan was to have it at Cumberland Park in Cleveland Heights, but where my concern was the maintenance. Come to find out, they didn't have a mayor at the time, so that was a lot of hurdles. They eventually moved it to Kane Park, and due to the pandemic, the park closed all its events for the whole year. So that just left me hanging again, and I was blessed to move to Slavic Village and to get the help from Joe and Tara to move the mural to Warsaw Park. And now we're here.
So for those who aren't familiar, Slavic Village is in the southeast side of the city, running primarily between I-77 and Broadway, and Warsaw Park is just off the Harvard exit and E-64th at 4021 E-64th. Next slide, please. Zoomed in a little bit, the park has swimming pool, tennis courts, a pavilion, and of course, the basketball court here. And so kind of going back to what Tara mentioned, that we had identified some other parks in the neighborhood or courts in the neighborhood. This one made particular sense because it's in good condition. And but there's, you know, there's some graffiti and some of the paint is coming off in some areas. But overall, the court made sense as, you know, some of the other ones we looked at need a lot more work and weren't feasible for a mural. So after Terrence and I saw, we both agreed that this would be an ideal spot. It is used a lot when, of course, the hoops are on and, and, you know, kids are playing basketball in the summer. So normally, this does get good traffic in the neighborhood.
Uh, the material is, this list is primarily the paint. It's not every single material that I'm going to be using, but I will be using an acrylic resurfacer, which is made for like high traffic, extreme weather, like outdoor courts slash tennis courts. It's what the, it's what they use or the professionals use. I will be using acrylic resurfacer, then a neutral concentrate, which will be, which the pigments will be added to, and that will give it the color. And then the lines will be put on with Strip Right paint. And then I would like to put on a clear coat for the maintenance that would add on probably a couple more years of durability. So that's the thing. And I have found out that this particular paint has a life expectancy of five to eight years. So that might be good to take into consideration. Um, and that's that.
And I was going to add, one thing that we didn't have on here that Terrence and I discussed was for the, the lines, to make sure the lines are precise for the basketball court, there's a template that he'll be purchasing, or this is probably another question, follow-up question for Tara or Director Cox, is if there is, if the city already has templates that we could use on the court to make sure the lines are, are, you know, accurate and straight. If not, we'll have to buy a template for here.
I can check Director Cox on that for you.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please.
Well, this is my design that I came up with. I designed it and um, put it on a court. I made this rendering for you guys' purpose, so y'all have an idea of what the finished product would look like. Yeah.
Um, so in all this, it has, you know, as everybody knows, it's a little difficult to do community engagement during this time, but we are planning to host, since it is outdoor and outdoor meeting, to let neighbors know what's happening. There won't be an opportunity to paint per se, but, you know, with any project we do in the neighborhood, we want to make sure neighbors are aware of it and supportive. So we are going to be hosting, we actually decided on the 29th of September. So in two weeks, we're going to be hosting a meeting here, just so neighbors know what's happening. Next slide. And as we know, maintenance with any public art project is critical, so it, you know, has a long lifespan. So we're familiar with doing these types of projects in Slavic Village, and we'll be assuming responsibility of the mural after it's complete. Terrence agreed that he would make sure, you know, that everything is, all the, the materials are, you know, properly in place two weeks after the application, just to give it some time to set and, and, you know, adjust to the weather. And then within two years, Terrence will be doing a touch-up to make sure, again, that the, the paint is in a good condition. So, you know, we're happy that he lives in the neighborhood, he's a new resident, and I think, you know, having, having somebody in the neighborhood, in their own neighborhood, have artwork makes it that much more personal. So we're happy that, that, you know, it's a little closer to home and that we have, you know, experience, as I mentioned, maintaining these types of projects. And, you know, we do find funding to maintain them. We just had a similar project that needed repainted, uh, repainted this week. So we try to, you know, find funds to maintain our projects that we put up in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And that is it. So thank you, and we'll take any questions for Terrence or myself.
Thank you. Commission members?
I move approval, Downing.
Second.
So we have a motion in two seconds. Further discussion?
Just want to say I really like the project, really like the design a lot. I think it's excellent, so very excited to see it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do too, Terrence. I think it's really nice.
Thanks.
Uh, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul. Tommy, are you there? Uh, Slade.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. We're looking forward to ending up on the court now. The peace mural.
That's right. We just got to get some hoops up next.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this next mural is by artist Dan Rothenfeld, who's also a local artist. You will be familiar with his work as he's gone through the approval process for a couple of murals over in the Flats Cuyahoga Valley area. This particular mural that he's proposed is in Ward 11, Brian Mooney's Ward, and it is at the Walford Industrial Park, which is not in a design review district. He has gotten the support of Councilman Mooney, which I'd like to read a direct quote from the letter of support that he wrote. He said, "The mural elevates and anchors the area. Flying away from the peace is a spectrum of birds rising together like people who carry the spirit of peace and goodwill into the community." He also got a letter of support from the former councilman of the area, Jay Westbrook, and one direct quote from his letter of support said that the mural is at home in this location. "It brings a particular reflective beauty to the intersection of youth and family recreation, a grand workplace in Cleveland's industrial history." So those are just a couple of letters of support for Dan's mural at the Walford Industrial Park. I also enthusiastically support this mural in its addition to the park and community residents. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the artist, Dan Rothenfeld, to go through his presentation.
Okay.
Can you back up a few slides, please?
Thank you, Tara. Uh, this mural actually started three years ago, the, when I was doing the Flats project. Susie Heck Reamer, who owns the Walford Industrial Park and has her business in there, approached me and said that she wanted to do a peace mural. So fast forward, three years later, she contacted me again and said that she had worked with the councilman, Councilman Moody, and I worked up three variations, and we chose the mural that was then done in August. When I contacted Tara, she notified me that I needed to do this presentation. So it's my pleasure to share with you the experience. Walford Avenue is actually a pretty busy street, and as I worked on the mural, the neighbors would drive by and, and shout, "Thank you," and some would stop and take pictures, and children would come and ride their bikes around. And so it was really a wonderful experience to engage with the neighborhoods as I simultaneously was putting information on this blank warehouse wall that seemed to speak to everyone. It, it spoke internally, I think, the word peace. It centers us, it tunes us into ourselves, and then socially, as the birds indicate, I think that it creates a resonance, like you could say the rock guitars for people who don't have anything in common, they now have something common that they share. And subsequently, softening the edge of the industrial park with the neighborhood, creating an entrance to the Mercedes Park, which was right at this right angle corner of 97th Street, creating a beautiful, uh, uh, beautiful entryway into the park. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Commission members?
Move approval, Downing.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Further discussion? I'd like to say this is also very beautiful. So, Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul. Slade.
Yes.
Uh, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a zoning map amendment. No, we don't have any map amendment. I was about to say, that's not on my schedule. We have mandatory referrals. Uh, this is approving the expansion of downtown Cleveland Improvement District, accepting the petitions from owners of properties in the proposed district as expanded. Who's here for this? God bless you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Marinucci with Downtown Cleveland Alliance. I'm here to talk about the legislation.
Thank you, Joe. Go ahead.
Um, the legislative summary you have before you gives you some highlights in terms of this renewal. The Special Improvement District was put in place in downtown Cleveland in 2006. So we've gone through historically three five-year increments. This will be the fourth renewal for another five-year period, which would extend the Special Improvement District's capacities from 2021 to 2025. The legislation that you have before you, uh, if I could just highlight really what, what some of the modifications to our historic programs. I assume members of the commissions are familiar with the work of the Alliance, and in particular, some of the programs that we have in place as a result of the Special Improvement District's work that are provided to downtown Cleveland. In particular, our Clean and Safe program, which I think many of you hopefully have experienced and know is, is kind of our premier, uh, program in terms of the work that we do in downtown Cleveland. In terms of this renewal, we've continued with the exact same methodology in terms of, uh, the assessment formula that we use in terms of working with our property owners. The annual budget in 2021 will be 4.874 million, and that grows into the fifth year approximately 5.276 million. And I'll note the, uh, some of the increases that, that are occurring going forward. We did secure property ownership petition signatures representing just under 63% of the linear front footage, which, under the statute, is a requirement. We have to meet a minimum threshold of 60% of the ownership of the linear front footage. And if you note how we are going to use the, the funds through the Comprehensive Services Plan, which would be, which would be approved through the legislation, you'll note that 62% of the funds would be used directly for clean and safe services, just under 18% for business development, business development marketing. And also, we've allocated some funds for Public Square and Maintenance and Administration and some discretionary funds. I will share with you that the two fundamental changes in, in terms of this expansion are, one, our geographic footprint. And Anthony or Maurice, if we can go to the next slide, I could, I could share with you the, the expansion. What we did was expanded the core. This is the historic footprint that had been in place or is in place currently. And as you can see, the western edge of the Improvement District essentially includes the Flats East Bank Phase II site, but does not include Old River Road, Settlers Landing, and the Columbus Road Peninsula. So if we can go to the next slide, you will see that we've expanded the geography to include Old River Road as well as the Columbus Road Peninsula. In working with our colleagues at Flats Forward and the stakeholders in the Flats, we felt it was important for us to take this step. One, it positions us to be in place, providing additional support and services to the neighborhood when Canal Basin Park hopefully begins constructions and that investment occurs. And it puts us in a position where we could more aggressively work with Flats Forward on the Columbus Peninsula, where, as you, I think, know, we recently worked with the stakeholders there to create a national, federal historic district to provide tax credits through that particular neighborhood. In addition, I would also point out that we have committed through the Special Improvement District reauthorization a $400,000 allocation to Public Square. Those funds will be dedicated to the maintenance, operations, and programming of the square. And I'd also point out further that in addition to the funds through the assessment, the Alliance has, through our historic or escrowed resources, are going to be providing an additional $100,000. So that would bring our contribution to Public Square and the Group Plan Commission up to half a million dollars each year from the year 2021 through 2025. So those are fundamentally, I think, some of the modifications. And again, some of the base programming that I noted will continue as a result of the renewal. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions you and the members of the commission might have.
Commission members? Hey, Joe, I, I guess I got a couple of questions. One is with still a number of first-floor buildings still being boarded up, are you guys involved with that at all under the Clean and Safe?
Well, we're involved, Mr. Chairman, really through our relationships with the property owners. You know, as you know, with the violence that occurred on, on May 30th, there, there were quite a few properties that were boarded up. Actually, the vast majority of the properties now have had the glass replaced, and we're continuing to work surgically with some of the remaining properties in, in terms of, one, kind of determining why they haven't removed some of the boards, and two, helping them identify some additional resources if necessary to move forward. But, so the answer is yes. From a staff perspective, we are extremely sensitive to that issue and cognizant of the impact it has on downtown.
All right, thank you. And then the other question, you know, because of what's happened recently, have you guys had full staffing for these properties to, you know, keep the streets clean and everything? Or have you noticed a reduction in staffing?
In terms of our staffing, Mr. Chairman, is that what you're referencing?
Yes.
Um, well, if I could share with you, historically, when, when the pandemic hit, we actually reached out to the city of Cleveland and came to determination that the ambassadors were essential personnel. And in fact, the ambassadors, we did not lay anybody off. We actually worked through the entire pandemic. And we were able, I think, to provide both the cleanliness services and the safety-related services that I think was vitally important even during the lockdown. So we strategically felt that we, for a whole set of reasons, wanted to be providing those services and make sure that there were the extra set of eyes and ears in terms of being in downtown Cleveland. And we also shifted gears and had our cleanliness team do more sanitary-related work in terms of, for example, sanitizing, uh, crosswalk buttons and other types of things that, that would really allow the public to be a little better protected in terms of the pandemic. So we were able to keep them in place, and, and they continue at this point to be at full capacity.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Commission members?
I move approval. This is Downing, and Joe, this is just great work, and it's been great work. And I'm so glad to see the district's been expanded. Thank you.
Second, Flucker.
We have a motion, second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
I'm going to abstain, just because it's, we're not part of this, but we do provide funding to Downtown Cleveland Alliance. So I'm not sure if I need to or not, so just out of the abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain.
Paul. Slade.
Yes.
Okay, Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Administrative approvals, could you all look, and then when someone's ready for a motion, go ahead. Or if you have any questions. I'll move approval.
Second, Downing.
We have a motion, second. I believe Slade was the motion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yep.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
All righty, Near West Design Review, before we take this off the table, there is a whole list of things that they need to do to come back. Has that been accomplished? Do we know? Can someone speak to that? Is the councilman on the phone? Is there anyone?
We have Tony, Tony Corrigan with his hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead, Tony.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Can hear you great.
Great.
Great, yeah. Mr. Papin and Mr. Spong are both on the line. I thought they might chime in. The plans have been significantly upgraded since what you last saw. You know, the last meeting, it was it was kept on the table. So I think what what they have, I don't think you have, well, I know have not been formally presented to the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. This is this is Dean Spong with Voca. I was on mute when I was trying to talk. But yes, Mr. Mr. Coyne's correct. We we've approached from a design standpoint all of the planning commission's previous comments.
Okay, great. And then there was one about going back out to the community. Did you do that?
Yes, this is Mitchell Papin. We spoke, I spoke to them last night, actually.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like we do have the councilman on the line now.
Yes.
Councilman.
Hello. How's everybody doing?
Good. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have not removed this from the table yet.
No, I know. I was just making sure that we were ready to remove it from the table.
Okay.
So it sounds like there's been a community engagement, and it sounds like there's been some changes. So can I get a motion to remove from the table?
I move to remove applicant's request from the table.
Second, Paul.
Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul. Sly.
Yes.
Okay, I'll need to swear all of you in. Anyone speaking to this except for the councilman, because he's been sworn in, obviously. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Could you state your name when you say I do?
Mitchell Papin, I do.
Dean Spong, I do. Brian Rubenstein, I do.
Phil Borine, I do.
Restby, I do.
Okay, I'm just going to start the presentation.
I'll start. So my name is Mitchell Papin again. I know we all have met multiple times. I'm the developer for this site and for Dollar General. So I I spoke to the neighbors yesterday, and I got a feel for where they were coming from. And when they had their meeting back in April, their first meeting about this project, Jeff from the CDC sent me notes on what they wanted and how to address their concern. So their main concern was they don't want a Dollar General. And, you know, they didn't they didn't think that it was a healthy alternative for the town. So what I did, I took that, and I went back to Dollar General, and I said, how can we make this good for everybody in a win-win situation? So what we did was we we introduced produce to the store. We introduced thirty-three perishable item coolers. And then we introduced a coffee in a slushy area for people that could come in and have a nice feel to it. And then what else we did was, how do we make this not look like your typical Dollar General? So we went above and beyond to addressing the the look of it. And Dean's going to give you a kind of a slideshow of what are what I'm proposing. And personally, I believe it'll be the nicest Dollar General in the country, and I'm not being biased. I'm for real. Wait till you see it. And a couple other of the neighbors' concerns were security lighting. Of course, we put security lighting over the exits doors, so it'll be lit up at night, not bright, but enough for security. Their other concern was traffic onto Memphis. It's a low-volume door, so there's not not like McDonald's across the street where it's just a revolving door. So there won't be much traffic onto Memphis. And then the other thing was West Fifty-Sixth Street, Dean will explain, is more of a for the employees only to park. It's not an exit, so no vehicles will be leaving onto West Fifty-Sixth Street. And that that's really their main concerns were, and I believe that we addressed them. And I'll have Dean go through this slide. I can answer any questions after the meeting or he speaks. Go ahead, Dean.
Good morning, everybody. So as Mitchell alluded to, I'll be taking the lead here on representing the design. So again, we are at fifty-six Seventeen Memphis Ave, about one block west of Fulton, between West Fifty-seventh and West Fifty-sixth. We are positioned next to the Metro Cleveland Security to the west. It's either Fat Guys or Monkey Bar to the east, and McDonald's to the north, and residential properties to the south. Next slide, please. A closer view of the existing site as it stands right now with a little bit of the site context. You can see right now that it is currently, I'm sorry, go one more slide. So what we've done is we've started to show a little bit more of the surrounding site context from the previous previous planning commission submission. This is a view looking southwest at the current vacant property, as well as sliding a little bit west on Memphis and looking at the adjacent property, which is the bar. Next slide, please. Views looking southeast now from Memphis. You can see again the vacant property, which has been vacant for about twelve years, and then the Cleveland Metro Security Center to our adjacent property. Next slide. We've also incorporated views from the north. So this is Memphis looking across the street at the McDonald's to the northwest. And the small masonry building is a Cleveland Public Power Building to the northeast. Next slide, please. Existing survey outlining the four parcels that will be consolidated into the proposed property, just a little over half an acre. The site is currently zoned local retail business district, which is an approved use for a retail store with no restrictions. Next slide, please. So this is a new slide where we've kind of shown the proposed location of the building in context to the surrounding area. You can see that we've we've made some improvements to the overall softscape, hardscape, and we've kind of shown it in context to the surrounding buildings. So now you can see all the buildings that we have mentioned previously. From from an overall design context, obviously, we feel that this building and the upgrades that we'll be doing to the property will be a massive improvement, not only to this to this site itself, but to the the physical surrounding area. Next slide, please. Here is our landscaping plan, showing at a closer level to how we're proposing to provide some landscaping, screening, shrubs. The building is located in the northeast corner of the property within the proper setback requirements. We are going to be providing trees of various types of colors and calipers specifically along the south. We are going to provide some trees of various heights that will help with screening to the residential units. We are also proposing to remove the existing deteriorating fencing, which is a various, I believe it's chain link and a mix of wood that is actually already on the proposed Dollar General property that will be removed, and our client is proposing to install a six-foot-tall white vinyl privacy fence along the entire south property line. Next slide, please. Again, this is just a view of some of the different colors, trees, shrubs, that we'd be proposing for the site, just to make it a little more colorful and interesting. Next slide, please. Photometric plan. Mitchell had alluded to, you know, making sure that we're providing enough building lighting for the security and just general pedestrian lighting going around the entire property, knowing that we are a corner site and we have to provide enough lighting from the Memphis side sidewalk, as well as the West Fifty-Sixth. There is plenty of lighting along the back south as well. And then we do have one pole-mounted light fixture along the west curb of the property. Next slide, please. Here is a little bit more of a site plan with just a bit more detail identifying, you know, the setback required spaces, the number of parking stalls, which we currently have. I believe it's twenty-three nine-by-nine-by-twenty spots with two two ADA. We were also discussing a little bit about this circulation of traffic. So off Memphis, the primary curb cut will be for customers and employees, enter and exit. The curb cut off of West, I'm sorry, yeah, West Fifty-Sixth at the south would be an entry-only for for basically employees and then truck traffic. So trucks will be coming from Fulton navigating west down Memphis, and then south on West Fifty-Sixth and entering from the back of the site, and then circulating back north through the property and then back out onto Memphis. Again, this will be an enter-only, not an exit, because we were worried about truck circulation and and impacting, you know, the the south residents and vehicular traffic. Next slide, please.
One second, Dean. I'd like to mention the the truck is going to be delivery from ten AM to six PM. So it's not going to be early morning or late delivery, late-night delivery. Dollar General has agreed to that. So it won't affect any, you know, neighbors with sleeping or waiting early. Go ahead, Dean.
Thank you, Mitchell. Floor plan, basic floor plan of the proposed seventy-five-hundred-square-foot building, just showing a little bit more context of the actual building footprint with the surrounding site context. This is kind of indicating general entry points along the off of Memphis is our primary entry through the parking lot. And then we've got a service area to the southwest corner, southeast corner. I apologize. This indicates also where we've got some of our canopies located in a relationship to windows. One of the new items that we have added to just help kind of clean up the property a little bit from the previous design is we have added a screened-in dumpster enclosure off the south. That would be six-foot-high masonry with a color to match the primary brick color, which you'll see here just shortly. Next slide, please. So now we're starting to see some of the modernization updates that we've made to the primary facades based on planning commission's last comments. What we've done here is the the building heights have not changed. We're still proposing that the primary building entry would be twenty-one feet to the top of coping, and the other three sides of the building would be eighteen feet to the top of coping, all matching height to provide screening from all sides. The building is still primarily a a two-toned masonry color. But what we've done is we've, again, we've added to modernize features. At the entry bumpout, we've incorporated a horizontal aluminum longboard wood grain material to help that feature pop a little bit more, and it also adds a little bit more contrast to the to the remaining facade of the building. The we've done a little bit of work with the masonry reliefs, where we've kind of broken up the the longer facade with these masonry pilasters that will be anchored with a stone veneer base. All of the previously shown metal awnings have been replaced with a more modern flat canopy. The primary canopy at the entry would be completely flat with the pitched for drainage and lighting, and the punched window canopies would also would be more of a brise soleil. So it would be an open, an open, open canopy that would cast, you know, some unique shadows on the building facade. We've also modified the windows. We've elongated the windows to make them a little bit more modern and changed the framing pattern. We've also added a stone sill to match the stone base veneer at the pilasters. The top entry feature also has a brise soleil cap to it, again, to make it a little bit more visually interesting and to also cast, you know, some more dynamic shadows onto the building at various times of the day. All of the glass is still clear glazing with a dark bronze aluminum frame. The primary windows are at the entry storefront system are all clear glazing. The punched windows along the building due to the interior program are a spandrel, so they will no be, there will not be any visibility through those windows. All of the gutters, downspouts, copings, light fixtures will all be a prefinished bronze. Next slide, please. Again, the bottom elevation is the south elevation now, where you can see we've added the dumpster enclosure at an angle for just proper access and loading for sanitation. The building has been upgraded with lighting. We have modified the lighting design a little bit. The south facade does have more of the utility service wall packs for security lighting. But along the the Memphis, the West Fifty-Sixth, and the parking side, we've added a more decorative up-down narrow beam light that will kind of wash the pilasters in the evening to help add a little bit of verticality to the building and make it a little bit more visually interesting in the evening as well. Next slide. Updated rendering perspective from Memphis Ave looking southwest, southeast, I apologize, indicating, you know, how the pedestrian circulation and connection, showing a little bit more of how the landscaping will integrate into design, and obviously, all the design features that I just mentioned to kind of modernize the the building type from the previously, the previously shown prototype. Next slide, please. Opposite view, also from Memphis, also looking down West Fifty-Sixth, showing that, you know, we've still trying to take some focus and approach to making that side of the building visually appealing for for traffic and everybody going down West Fifty-Sixth. Next slide, please. Material palettes indicating all the previous materials that have indicated the two different bricks, the the bronze aluminum, the precast off-white stone that'd be used at the pilasters, as well as the sills at the punched windows, the horizontal longboard with a darker walnut tone, and then an image of the proposed vinyl fence. Next slide, please. All of the lighting, showing the decorative fixtures, the recessed canopy fixtures at the entry, security lighting, the wall packs along the south, and then the the head for the single pole out in the parking lot. Next slide, please. Mitchell, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about this, but these are interior images that kind of alluded to Dollar General's business case of also indicating that this is not a typical Dollar General. This will have fresh produce. It will have grab-and-go stations, coffee stations, coolers. Next slide, please. Yep, here's just some images of of what those those stations will look like within the the proposed design. And I believe that's it. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dean. This is Mitchell Papin again. I saw that in the chat section, Anthony Santora had a question about the 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 truck parking with the handicap stalls. The truck is going to be parked along the back of the building where the loading dock is, so it will not block any vehicles or anybody coming in or out of the Dollar General. And then John, I don't know his last name, had a question, Dean. I don't know if you can answer this. Are the side windows backlit, or they are going to be dark?
Side windows will be dark. No, no, the way will spandrel, just because of the interior program. Most likely, we'll have shelves and other pieces of equipment against those those the glass. There'll be no visible light from inside the building coming through those windows. So the the lighting will actually be from the decorative sconces out on the outside.
Thank you. And like you said, the Dollar General sign, we took the yellow out of it. Dollar General agreed to that. It gives a very classier feel.
Right, so signage is is obviously a separate review, but it would be an eternally illuminated sign, and the board is basically a painted plywood exterior signboard.
And then the other thing I'd like to mention, there's right now, there's five curb cuts. We're taking away three of them, so we will, it'll only have two when we're done.
And and you should, it should be noted that Mitchell is going to also green those removed curb cuts that you could see, if you could go a couple slides back to the existing conditions. Couple more.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yep, sorry. It was almost like one of the first or second slides.
So, yeah.
There you go. All of those existing curbs will be removed and greened as part of this proposed development.
Thank you. Do we have any hands up, Maurice?
No hands. Well, we have Mr. Coyne, but I I'm not sure if that was from previous. Now we have, now we have Matthew Moss.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make some
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to make some comments as to the design. Um, I think throughout this process, we've heard from the community. That uh, the use is a real concern for these residents. Um, in the neighborhood and notwithstanding those concerns, I do think that we have seen uh, superior designs for Dollar Generals, but the one that comes to mind is the. Dollar General over on Fulton. Uh, that was a project that was made, uh, that was designed in compliance with the city's urban form overlay. And I think I just wanted to to make the brief comment that since this is before the planning commission for design. Um, that what I, what I recommended to the team through the design view process at the local committee. And what I want to recommend to the commission here is that we strive for a design that. Can exist beyond the life of this particular user, perhaps however long or short that may be. And really contribute to the character and the vitality of this retail district on Memphis. And I think that's challenging when it has elements such as spandrel glass. I think it's challenging when the. Pedestrian entrance for the building is oriented towards the parking lot instead of the street. And I think um, what we try to do as staff through in in recommending and making recommendations for the design of this project is to shape it. As as in such a way to get a building that will be useful for various users and various uses over the life of the project, over the life of the building and. You know, as long as it may exist in the city of Cleveland. And I think there are some challenges still with this design and um, I would just uh, I want to make that clear and and to the commission and. And point out that that I think that that's. Uh, a worthwhile area of focus in terms of how the overall design contributes over the life of this building to the retail district and to the city. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Mr. Santora with his hand raised.
Anthony? Uh, good morning, Commission. Uh, I know, thanks, Matt. And I want to build off of what Matt said. You know, city planning has uh, some very big concerns with this project. Uh, stemming from the design, from the community opposition we heard at the last meeting, and I'd be interested, the councilman is here today. I'd be interested to hear what he has to say about it, if he's talking to the constituents anymore. Uh, and also what happened at when the developer reached out to the community to see what their input on the current design was. And then. From the design standpoint, I a hundred percent agree with Matt. Um, this building, I think, needs to. Go back to the drawing board and the developer really needs to look at ways in which they can address the primary and secondary facades of this building. Currently, the way it sits, they do not address the street very well. Um, they frankly look like the side and back of a building facing. A primary and secondary street, which I uh, we don't feel is appropriate uh, at this location, given it's right on the corner. So I don't know, councilman, if you want to speak at all to to uh, the community input to see if we can hear what they had to say. Um, but tho- those are our thoughts on it.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Miss uh, the councilman with his hand raised.
Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I think this is our third or fourth planning commission meeting on this particular project. And we did have a follow-up community meeting. Uh, last night, um, in response to the suggestions of planning commission two weeks ago. I will say that the developer has. Tried to take into consideration the community concerns. Um, you know, did take the time to be on the call to to address the community's directly. Um. All that being said, I think we're left with two things that that are, you know, two issues to be resolved. Regardless of what we do to this, to make it look a certain way, um, it's still a, it's still a Dollar General. It's still a use that the community. Said, yes, this is what they've done is much better than what we started with. They've listened, but it's still a dollar store. It's still a Dollar General. And that use is something that that the community just didn't want. Um, secondly, in terms of the design. Um, issues that were just brought up by by planning. It kind of gets to a a a bigger issue to me, which is, I agree, I am a. Very, very interested in moving forward on our our form-based zoning plan, and I would really like, you know, the Old Brooklyn area to really reflect. A form-based zoning approach. Um, but that kind of brings up. One of the issues to be resolved by the commission is that. This particular project came in just before the moratorium on small box retail. Um, and it came in, you know, just before, I might say just before, but during a time. Which we've been actively discussing form-based zoning um, for the Old Brooklyn community. And I guess I just get to the, to the larger issue of. What does the community want to see on our on our retail corridors? What type of use, what type of buildings? And and yes, this particular building, this particular project came in, from what I understand. Before the moratorium was signed into law. And it is before the form-based zoning for this area was was in place, and I I understand all that. But I still have to represent the community intent and the council intent of what we want these to look like. So what I'm going to ask the commission. Um, is that, you know, if if you believe that that we're here to this, to this, to determine whether. This fits the applicable zoning, um, you know, laws and plans and and regulations. Then maybe, you know, then then they have done certain things. But if there's a, if the authority of the planning commission is to really consider. Community uses, the the will of the community, what the direction of the. Of 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 zoning and planning, what we want to look and feel of our retail quarters would be, I would say that, you know, this this Dollar General was not what the community is hoping for. So I really appreciate, I I do appreciate the time that the developer put into this, that they try and, you know, listen to the community, but I also appreciate the. Years of work that planning's been doing towards form, form-based zoning. Um, and and really trying to come up with what what do we want our communities to look like? You know, fifty, sixty years from now, and you know, many of us won't be here anymore. What what do we want this corridor to look like? So um, I really, you know, I just, I just really think that 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 is the direction that the city should should go, but um. And I understand all the different considerations with this one, but I would just just ask that if if we're really looking to. Represent what we want the community to look like today and in forty, fifty, sixty years. Then I think we need to reconsider this project. So thank you for listening to me and uh, thanks to everybody who has with the time and and working on this project.
Mr. Chairman, we have a Jeffrey with his hand raised. I can't make out his last name.
Thanks, thank you. For recipe from the Old Brooklyn Community Development Corporation. Uh, I I just also want to represent the community uh, voice that we heard both on last night's meeting and the prior meeting. Um, is that the community really respected and appreciated the uh, the considerable effort put in by. Uh, by by the developer and by Vokon, um, based off the planning commission's feedback, but ultimately it does not fit within the community's vision or the community plans for itself. And uh, that is what we ask you to consider, uh, that the community's voice uh, be heard in this beyond uh, just the um. The design matters of the zoning code. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, this is Mitchell. I'd like to men, the developer, I'd like to mention uh, on the call last night. Everybody was pretty much in agreeable that this would not only be. A nice building. They'd said it would be the nicest building on the street. So as for a design standpoint, everybody on the call yesterday agreed that it'd be a very. Nice building, especially for this road. And as Dean showed earlier, you can see all the aesthetics of the other buildings. Around it and this by far would be a nice building. As for future forty, sixty years from now, I believe this building will still be a nice building and it could. And it can be a gym. It could be a doctor's office. It could be uh, whatever you want if Dollar General doesn't stay there. So. This property's been vacant for over fifteen years, Jeff said last night. Um, that's a very long time. It doesn't bring in very many taxes. With with my project, it's going to be, you know, close to a couple million dollars. It's going to bring in jobs. It's going to bring in property, more property taxes. It's going to benefit the city and it's going to benefit the people who have to shop at Dollar General and can't afford to go to Kroger or elsewhere, and they can shop here and also get fresh produce. And go home happy. And a lot of the people that shop here don't have vehicles to drive three miles to a Kroger so they can walk to this store. So you got to look at it as a standpoint of the people. Who shop here. I know the ten people that showed up at yesterday's meeting was, they had their concerns, but don't forget there's seventeen thousand people. Within one mile that also have uh, concerns and that is the way of shopping and. You know, a lot of people are going to shop here than the ten people that had concerns about it. And that's that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, we have uh, Jeffrey from Old Brooklyn, I believe, has his hand raised again, or or was it the councilman?
I'm uh, I'm fine. Thank you, though, sir.
The councilman had his hand raised again. Did you, you're muted, sir. Councilman, you're muted. You're muted.
Hate it when that happens. I just wanted, I I raised my hand and I just wanted to, you know, I don't want to, you know, spend all this time. I don't want to be um. Kind of dispute over the efforts made to this attractive a building as it could be in the Dollar General. The current. I don't know that anybody's, I don't know, not that if the most attractive Dollar General is the best-looking building on this, on the street. I didn't hear that. I don't want to. These little nuances of it. Um, but but just this. The community personally appreciates the efforts and it's just getting over this question that it still is. Uh, that it's still a fallacy. So that, thank you.
That was, that was very difficult to hear. Uh, if you're not speaking, please reach your microphone. I'm not sure if we're getting back from somebody else. Or, there we go. It's quiet now.
Did you need to, do you need me to repeat my poetic words or did you get the gist of it?
I could barely understand you. I don't know about anybody else, but and I would like definitely want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, I just wanted to respond that it's. Undisputed that the community heard, the community appreciates the efforts of the developer to try to make this as nice of a Dollar General as possible. Um. And we believe that that's been achieved, that it is probably the nicest design of a Dollar General as we currently know them, but it's still a dollar store was kind of the. The sentiment and we don't know, you know, you can promise that there's going to be um, produce and certain amount of fresh foods, whatever, but you know, how long? What's to say that, you know, in years gone by, um, that uh, well, you know, that wasn't selling, the bananas weren't selling, so we needed floor space for, you know, these uh, this bubble gum. We just don't know. We can't really. Rely on what the, that this will continue to have the food selection all, but the the bottom line was that, you know, the efforts are appreciated. But at the end of the day, it is still a small box retail. There's a belief that the neighborhood, the areas has a, has plenty of these types of stores. That was the overarching sentiment, but it wasn't not, it wasn't uh. As uh, you know, as Mitch said, it wasn't anything, you know, hostile or negative towards the developer. It was just this notion that. You put as much lipstick on this as you can and you still have a Dollar General.
We had Mr. Coin with his hand raised.
Yeah, I'd like to just uh, comment on a couple of things. Um, I I just remind the commission that this does meet the zoning code. There are no variances. It is a nice store. Um, the comparisons to say it's just a dollar store, somebody's going to have to tell me what a dollar store means. This is nicer than any convenience store in the city of Cleveland. There are dozens. It's nicer than any seven eleven in the city of Cleveland. There are dozens. I think it's nicer than the other stores that have dollar in their name. Everything in the store isn't just a dollar. With COVID, Dollar General stores were identified as being an essential business throughout the country. And I understand there's a moratorium which does not apply to this, as the councilman pointed out. The city should look at whatever things they want to do if they want to change their zoning code about uses. It meets the code. It's a very nice thoughtful design. And I think that should be given some consideration. I understand that some of the neighbors may not like it. But that's a separate topic and Dollar General, if I put my other hand uh, for the company. They're awaiting the discussion on the building code, the health department code, or I'm not sure how the zoning code will be changed to accommodate this. But Dollar General's heard nothing. Dollar General is also proceeding to put produce, fresh produce, vegetables, fruits. And in several stores in the city, they're retooling at least a half a dozen other stores, so they're proceeding to do that. We would request that that the commission look at this project on the zoning ordinances. That are in place, the design that's been presented, the context. Given the zoning code and we'd request approval. We understand you can't satisfy everybody, but this particular site was identified by the. Old Brooklyn Development Corporation as a, an acceptable site for this use. And uh, I think that was an objective decision. I understand how uh, things turn. Uh, because it has dollar in the name, not diminish. It is a significant investment in the city of Cleveland to create jobs and to add to the town, the city for our school system. We're not getting Dollar General, Mr. Papen. Who I have to forgive him because he's from Pittsburgh. I'm just kidding. Uh, and I like your hat, Mr. Rollins. The the fact of the matter is, it's it's going to add to the tax base. It it's it's a good business. And I think we should give consideration as to going forward in the city. Uh, you know, Dollar General welcomes how we can address some of the concerns that have been raised. Uh, but I think it's important that we find our code. I really do, or or otherwise, what, why, why do we go through these proceedings? If in fact, we're just going to go with the whims of what some people have have to say. And I I'm concerned about, I really am concerned about that. This is uh. From the last design you saw, this is a couple hundred thousand dollars more than that design. And I think this is an important component to the Memphis corridor, which is a commercial corridor. Mr. Flucker at the prior meeting talked about. Context and when you look at the national retailers and companies all along Memphis in that area. I I think that this this would be uh, an addition and consistent use for a vacant parcel of land that's been on the market for nearly fifteen years. So I would request the commission to give, you know, fair consideration to it. Mr. Pap and Mr. Spawn can answer any questions. Um, I I'm not sure what else we can do. Uh, some of the design comments, I I think are are a little bit um. Um, out out of bounds, given how far they've gone. Uh, it's in making these changes. So we believe that this is an excellent project. And I would hope the commission would look at this and at least give consideration to it uh, going forward.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Santora and we have Jeff from Old Brooklyn again with his hand raised. Both gentlemen.
He goes first.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I I just want to address a couple of the items. And first off, I want to say I I do think the development team and the design team has done a tremendous job trying to work. Um, with what they have and trying to make it the best building they can. However, what I'm consistently hearing is that, well, this building is better than. The other buildings around it, or this building is better than such and such building here. You know, while we look at context, it is important and it's one thing that we always emphasize is that we look at these buildings as these buildings stand. And how they stand by themselves when we look at them. So. To try and compare this and say, well, this is the best Dollar General that's going to be in the city of Cleveland based off of the design, I don't think it's very appropriate. Is this the best building? That it can be? Is it the way that it approaches the street? Is it the way it it approaches the pedestrians, the vehicles? All of that goes into consideration when you're looking at the design. And from that standpoint, I think we need to start judging these buildings so that they can be. The best they can be and not just the best dollar store they can be. So I I just wanted to make that very clear when we're looking at the buildings to try and make sure that. We understand when we're design, when we're reviewing these buildings and when we're looking at the design of them, we need to emphasize not just for, well, the best this store has to offer. But the best it can be for the city, for this area and for that building itself. So I I just wanted to put that. And again, I think the developer has done a great job and I think the um. The design team has done a good job. I just, City Planning does not feel that it is there currently uh, enough to support it.
Mr. Chairman, we have Councilman Kelly.
Okay.
You're muted. Oh, you don't have a comment? No, he's good. Okay, then we have other hands raised at the moment.
Who else had a comment?
We had Jeff had his hand raised earlier. I'm not sure if it was just from a previous, but right now we have nobody.
Okay.
Wish to speak.
Um, first commission members, questions?
We have Councilman Slye with his hand raised.
Councilman.
My internet's been jumpy, so we're going to do my best, but you know, I, 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 I am inclined to agree with the comments on design from staff, but then also just as far as the, you know, the, the general use, I, you know, my concerns remain and you know, the news reported this morning that, you know, Cleveland's the, you know, largest, highest poverty large city in the country. And this is a company that in twenty seventeen, its CEO said, our core customer continues to struggle. And, and it just seems that this is a business that is not set on improving, you know, the economic situation of Clevelanders. It's a business that seems eager to exploit, you know, higher poverty rates. So it's, I have a difficult time thinking that, you know, uses like this are beneficial for our city. And I just wanted to bring that up to my, my colleagues because I think it's important.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Coyne with his hand raised.
Tony.
Mr. Slyf, I'd like to respond to that if you don't mind. This company services in rural and urban areas. Their product is pricing wise as competitive as anybody. And they provide a service, yes, in many neighborhoods where there frankly are food deserts even, which is why they're addressing some of their product lines being diversified further. Some of their frozen food sections actually are very healthy choices for people. But if you look at what companies are doing things that are capitalized, Dollar General is investing in areas where there's not as much sometimes. They're not part of the problem. One could look at that as being part of the solution. They're not a franchisee unfortunately, so they're not as local. But I think when you get into that discussion, just like the design and the legality of what kind of design you want, you can only go so far with that. Do you want investment or not? And do you want to have a company that's got a pretty good track record in many respects? Certainly they have some issues that they're trying to address and they welcome discussions with the city. Mr. Pappin is trying to build the best that he thinks he can do in this location. And, and I, and I'm not sure that, that it's fair to say that, especially that awful data we heard today about poverty in this city, that it's fair to suggest that a company like this or a service like this is, is in any way part of the problem. Providing goods and services that people need and many people do walk to Dollar General stores. So I, I urge you to look at the, the zoning code, the planning that's going into this. There's no overlay district. There's no variance. I think it's really important. When it comes to what's going on with the moratorium and changing the zoning code to get into some of these other issues, I applaud how that's done as long as it's done fairly, but it's not there yet. So I think we should pledge and the commission members that take oath to and follow the ordinances in the zoning codes. I think it's really important. And so I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't know that it's fair to, to even equate the poverty problems in this city to this kind of a proposed use in Memphis.
And, and this is Mitchell, and I'd also like to mention, Mr. Slye, take time and reach out to the customer who shops at Dollar General and listen to that person's story. They, they can't go to Kroger or Costco's and buy in bulk toilet paper for the whole month. They're living unfortunately paycheck to paycheck where they need a store like this to shop at. And they, with this store is, it's a beautiful store that they're going to feel good going into with that kind of situation. And I just talk to a customer, listen to their story and, and, and hear how Dollar General helps their way of life.
Is Matt still on the call? Worries?
I believe he is.
Hey, Matt, quick question for you. You brought up some design issues. Were you part of these conversations with the designers and the developer? And were they receptive to the questions or the comments you had?
Mr. Chairman, I've discussed the design with the development team a few times through the design review process, especially when they were going through the local committee review. Prior to, or immediately after the last planning commission meeting where this project was most recently tabled, I did reach out to the development and design team with a copy of our guidelines for the urban form overlay. I know that that isn't mapped here on Memphis. But like I mentioned earlier, it is a standard that a Dollar General has been built to before on Fulton. And to the councilman's point, it, it is a code that is transitory between our current Euclidian code and the future form-based code we wish to implement and are currently working on as a pilot program in various parts of the city. So my recommendation would be, and I made this recommendation to the design team, would be to meet that code at this location to the greatest extent possible, if not in its entirety. And I think that that is the best, most objective metric we have in terms of ensuring high quality walkable urbanism in terms of, of this type of building in this location. So it would be my recommendation that they, that they design to that standard. And it's a standard we have written down. It's a standard we've used in other places to, I think, great success. And it's a standard we're looking to employ along more corridors like Memphis. So I don't know if that's helpful, but I think that would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'd like to ask the design team. Obviously they're, they have the code. And when they put this forward, that wasn't the code that was in this area. But as the designers, do you think there would be a problem making a few changes to kind of incorporate that form-based code?
This is, this is Dean Spahn. Well, I will say that Mr. Moss and I did speak and he did share the urban form overlay. And we do have the code in front of us and we did review different approaches to incorporate pieces of that code into this design concept. It was our opinion as we were reviewing this code that the current existing, the current existing zoning restrictions were actually in some cases more stringent than this urban, urban overlay. We feel that there are, there are subtle mixes of incorporating that piece into this design along with the existing zoning as it relates to, you know, the building design, the frontage, the pedestrian oriented buildings and features. We feel like we've met some of it, but not all of it. Obviously it's, it's not applied to this area on Memphis, but we, we have reviewed it and Mr. Moss did share that with us.
All right, thank you. Commission members, questions?
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Coyne with his hand raised again.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have much more to say, but I wanted to just know as a matter of law, I hate to do this, urban form overlay does not apply to this property. That's number one. Number two, and I say this respectfully and it's going to be contradictory. This site, this design, it's far superior than the Dollar General on Fulton. I'm sorry, not even close. And the urban form overlay would require some other changes. Frankly, the entryway, where it's located, you've got to accommodate the ADA parking. But I, I just really take issue with more design changes given where this is at right now. And, and I don't know if the commission members are familiar. As an Ohio City resident, I wasn't particularly impressed with the Dollar General on Fulton. I hate to say that, but just the changes that were made to accommodate the, which it technically complies with. I, I just don't think, I think this store and this design is so much superior.
Well, Tony, I think you might have heard me say, I understood that the urban form overlay district didn't apply at the time you guys were going through the design process. I was more interested in what they thought of it in comparison to.
Sure enough.
Yeah, so, um, commission members, we need to move on to other things. What is everyone thinking? They have, do you have any questions?
Well, I mean, unfortunately, we, we have what we have here. And I don't know what the pushback is to making it some more urban design, but you know, obviously the applicant hasn't done it. And from what I hear, quite frankly, the community, there's no, no intrinsic value to the community, regardless of what this design is. So I, I, I would like to move to reject the applicant's request.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
No.
Slye.
Yes. Motion carries, it's rejected.
Okay, let's get rid of our zoning code, folks.
Let's move on to the next. Northeast Design Review District, this architect trainer on Seventy Second Street, two family, two multifamily apartment buildings, new construction. Who's here for this?
I am Jermaine Brooks, as well as my partners are here on the call as well.
Richard Singleton here.
I need to swear you in, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall enter under the penalty of perjury.
Jermaine Brooks, I do.
Richard Singleton, I do.
Brett Crandall.
Brett Crandall, I do.
Thank you. Who, who's going to start us off?
I'll start, I'll start off with a, just a quick intro. My name's Jermaine Brooks. I'm one quarter of WRJ Developers. My partners are Willie Levy, Richard Singleton, Jamie and Barry, and our architectural team is Three Square. First off, good morning to the chairman and the board. We've been here before with our, with another project, the New Huff Paradigm that was tabled. And we pivoted to our development idea that we had on East Seventy Second and St. Clair. While we were, when we came a development company, we were looking for other avenues to, to start building that did not concern with a stick build. And we started looking into cargo architecture. And from there, we did a lot of research. We went, visited Cargo Medium in Columbus, which was supposed to be the, the state's first, but it was halted. And from there we started and we found Three Square, which is one of the nation's leading cargo architectural design companies. Through connections that we, we've had, we were able to access and purchase property on Seventy Second in St. Clair. And ironically, it was the area in which we all grew up and we're all from Cleveland and grew up in Cleveland that we used to go to Gordon Park and have fun when we were kids. As we all been in the real estate and doing multiple multifamilies, flips and rehabs and buy and holds. We've had established a relationship in which we were able to garner and purchase property on East Seventy Second. From there, it was just like a blessing almost. There was a shipping container on the site. And that just brought our ideas to more cargo architecture and the possibility of bringing these shipping containers and apartment building to that thoroughfare on Seventy Second and St. Clair. So that's what brings us to Architainer on Seventy Second. And I'm going to pass it over to Brett Crandall with Three Square and he can discuss the, the actual project.
Thanks, Jermaine. Good morning and thank you, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me clearly. So I am the architect with Three Squared Inc. We are a full-service architecture, design and engineering firm based out of Detroit with a satellite office in San Diego. We are specialists in the world of cargo architecture, which is always a hybrid type of building that utilizes shipping containers, ISO approved shipping containers as a, a part of the design element. Obviously, no building is completely constructed of containers, so it mingles with other forms of construction, including steel masons, et cetera. And we have completed thirteen container projects to date with another eighteen projects currently in various stages of conceptual approvals or permitting to start construction. And so WRJ came to us a few months ago. They had gone through this process once before with a, with a different architect and brought us in due to our expertise in the field. And so we have worked together with them to take back all of the comments from the last time that they went through a conceptual design review and really address every single one of those comments that, that we possibly could. And so the design that we're talking about today is at a conceptual point. And really what we're looking for here is, is feedback and an attempt to read to gauge the, the support of this project and what we could do to better help support the idea of strengthening the corridor of Seventy Second Avenue from the waterfront, starting with Gordon Park, over to St. Clair. Because coming off of I-90, this is a major thoroughfare into the city. And from what we've heard in discussions with council member and, and other members of planning department is that they really want to, to revitalize this area and bring it back more to a neighborhood status. So that is our complete and total intent here with this project under discussion. We are looking at sixty-four units in total. And we, we went through multiple design iterations, kind of looking at the best way to lay out the site and maximize the amount of parking available onsite. And we ended up combining the two separate structures into one structure and connecting them via a double loaded corridor. So we can continue on to the next. So another view from Seventy Second, looking at the building. This would be the main entryway that kind of takes place between the two masses of the structure, creating a strong link from the, the sidewalk to the major building. There will also be an entrance at each end of the building in the north or south that are entered directly from the parking lot. But the idea here is to really strengthen the streetscape in a way that makes this pretty walkable for residents so that they can connect to where Seventy Second intersects with St. Clair at the, at the corner to the south so that residents can, can walk down to the area that's under commercial revitalization. And there's a lot of opportunities there for how to reuse buildings for different, different other projects. We can continue on. Having an overhead view, starting to show the scale of the project. There is, on the other side of the block is all single-family residences. There are many of which that are in various states of disrepair or, or they have already been removed. And then the remaining houses is secretly occupied and well taken care of. And so, you know, kind of strengthening the neighborhood while we put an apartment building on this corridor and keeping the quieter streets strengthened with residential. You can see that the building is flanked to the north and south by parking lots to fit as many parking spaces as possible. And then utilizing the on-street parking on Seventy Second that is already in place. And it looks like recently there's been the addition of a bike lane that's the other side of the parking, which is a nice feature. The kind of, it's definitely utilizing bike parking spaces, allowing people to strengthen that corridor, not only on foot, but on bicycles as well. Continuing on. So this is our rendered site plan, not to scale, but it does show, you know, kind of the interaction with the buildings. We have some brownstone apartment buildings to the north. There is another structure to the south, similar in scale. This is eight consecutive lots that WRJ is owners of on Seventy Second. And you can see the single-family houses on the other side of the block there. Continue on. Just a quick zoning ordinance review. To our knowledge, there are two, possibly three slight variances that we have already been discussing with, with everybody around the project. And that is one, the parking, because it's going to be challenging to meet the density that, that we believe that the neighborhood really calls for, but also that, that allows the, you know, pro forma, the numbers to work for the developers to take on a project like this. So we, we currently have onsite, we have two-thirds of the required parking. So on the sixty-four units, we have forty-four parking spaces, four of which are handicapped and accessible. And the, the other variance that we are aware of is that according to the height district of this area, the building would max out at thirty-five feet. We really took a close look at this. And we'll see in the following slides that there is a building at the end. that there is a building at the end of the block, uh, at the intersection with St. Clair that is, uh, is about sixty-five feet tall. It's well over a five-story building. It looks like more of a commercial use. And so we're, we're looking at like the industrial nature of the area to the north of it and how it kind of like grows into the neighborhood on this side. And we really do feel strongly that four stories is an appropriate scale for this area. And so we are requesting a five-foot, uh, variance in height so that we can place a forty-foot structure rather than a thirty-five-foot. And then, uh, in the, uh, design review, uh, from the neighborhood standpoint that we went through, uh, prior to this meeting, um, actually, if we can go back one slide, we could talk about that real quickly. They, uh, they approved it with the condition that we actually moved the building forward toward Seventy Second Street. Now, what we're looking at here is, uh, the building is centered on the lots, uh, just because we were abiding by the, uh, zoning ordinance back requirements. So from the, the front and from the rear is a twenty-foot setback. Uh, the, um, the conceptual design review actually encouraged us to align the building forward to match the frontage of all the other buildings along the block, which we have absolutely no problem with. The only reason, again, that we pushed it back was by, by the, the zoning ordinance. And, uh, it does, it does create a kind of a nice space up front, uh, kind of pushing that back and, and filling it with vegetation and benches. There is a bus route along Seventy Second that has a stop here right in front of the structure. So, uh, maybe, maybe nice that up and, and adding for people that are waiting there. But, um, regardless, I, I don't think that makes a huge impact on the design, whether it's pulled forward. Uh, and the distance i- in, uh, topic right now is, is, I would be pulled forward, uh, from where it's at now. So we can continue on. And to the next one. And then talking about, uh, materials, we really took into consideration the comments from, uh, from the previous meetings. Uh, we, again, are, are specialists in cargo architecture, so we've done a number of projects. Uh, I, I am happy to say that we have a hundred percent approval rating in municipalities, uh, in getting, uh, containers approved material. And, and a lot of that has to do with how we treat containers aesthetically. Uh, we weren't, we learned very quickly that, uh, people are concerned about the looks of containers when they can see the hardware and the doors. And when you treat the doors and the container, uh, the gaps between containers well, uh, most people have no idea that you're actually even using, uh, this reclaimed upcycled material. Uh, and so what we do is we leave them strategically exposed, uh, and we have elected to, uh, to cover the door ends. Um, and only expose the containers on the sides where you actually just get a really deep corrugated material. Uh, it turns out very nice. Honestly, um, we have a couple of projects we're happy to reference. Here's images of ones right there. Uh, it's actually, it, it would cost quite a bit of money to, uh, to get that look via other materials. So it's nice to just utilize the container as it's finished. And then in the front, we're looking at removing the doors and we will actually frame in, uh, a wall that will receive the glazing on the front. So that's for like the majority of, of the light pours into the unit. And then surrounding the glazing, we will have, uh, metal panels. So looking at white metal panels, uh, with a, with a reveal in the joints, uh, to kind of create the pattern in the front. And then, uh, taking a look at a faux wood material, so it's, uh, it's treated metal panel system that looks like a wood product, but it has, uh, significant longevity and it's a lot less maintenance, um, from a perspective of that. And then, uh, looking at welded wire mesh guardrails and, uh, a vertical metal panel system for the stairwells and entrances. Moving on, uh, here's some images of the site as it currently exists. Uh, so WRJ developers actually have a gardener who's out there tending to the site and growing some products on there. It's a really lovely man. Um, and, uh, and so here's the condition of the site right now. Most of them, uh, are, are vacant lots, just flat lots. Uh, there are a couple of trees we have marked, um. Any sizable tree, we'll do our absolute best to, uh, to leave untouched onsite. Uh, and I believe there's only one that would, uh, have to be removed from parking lot at current. We go into the next slide. So there were, uh, two buildings, um, throughout the course of the lots. One of them has already been demolished and the other one is set to be demolished. Uh, after some extensive, of research and looking at the possibility of saving the existing building, uh, the developers were, uh, unfortunately not able to, to save that building in its condition. Uh, and then at the other end of the, uh, the south end of the block, as I mentioned, there's a sixty-five-foot tall building. So kind of, uh, gradually working that scale up to where it meets that commercial corridor at St. Clair. So that's the building that we were just sitting right there. Um, which, which might be a great opportunity for, uh, for reuse down the road. And then, uh, so here are, uh, two elevations, both of the front of the building. So showing that kind of like portal entrance, uh, looking at the materials as we discussed. Every unit gets a balcony, um, and then seeing the, the materials that we had discussed here. And then the lower image is actually zooming out a little bit to show the scale of the structure and context of the rest of the block. And we thought this image is very important to kind of reinforce our ask for that extra five feet in height that we could go for a fourth story, which we, we really strongly believe connects that, that residential and commercial feeling. Uh, there is a large, um, fourth story, uh, it's a manufacturing plant, it looks like, that's, uh, that's not currently in use. That's across the street from here and, and a little farther north. Uh, again, could be a great development opportunity in the future, uh, as we kind of start to, uh, address the residential in this area and to revitalize this corridor a little bit. Um, moving forward, have a side elevation showing for the parking lot, just the scale of trees, um, that are currently existing and then smaller new trees planted, uh, along the streetscape and how, how that scale kind of interacts with the houses, uh, in the rear of the lots. And, um, and this could slightly change, uh, moving forward if we do push this, uh, building closer to the street as was the recommendation from our last conceptual design review. Uh, and then utilizing that backyard area a little bit more for residents, whether it's creating some amenity space or a more comfortable entranceway, uh, from the, from the back of the building. Um, that's definitely something we're looking for, um, directioning on. The next one. So this shows the plots, uh, on the block that WRJ currently owns. So not only do they own the eight consecutive lots that we are discussing here for the site plan, but they also own two additional lots that they are looking to develop in some way, whether they acquire more lots and, and put more multifamily on it or whether we utilize them to support this development in particular. Um, also something that we're, we're eager to hear some feedback from, but just showing the, uh, the site plan and context. Next slide. So this image is, uh, our, our conceptual floor plans at, at current. Um, and we, we are happy to announce that we arrived at a fifty-fifty split in the unit mix. Uh, so half of those units are nine-hundred-and-sixty square foot, uh, two-bedroom apartments. And then the other half of the units are six-hundred-and-forty square foot studio apartments. WRJ did a lot of market research, that was experts in this field, in order to private these numbers, also balance the pro, pro forma and work well on our site. And then all of these units, this is a typical floor plan repeated four times. All of the units connect via a double-loaded corridor, uh, that gets you to, um, to equidistant. Uh, your stair towers sit out of the building, and then we have an elevator bank right at the front entrance. Um, and, and pending conceptual approval as we move into schematic design, we would really detail out those moments, how the entrance works. Uh, and, you know, with the overall design. Moving on. And then our final two slides are just our current conceptual floor plans, um, showing, uh, a typical layout. Uh, you can see that a two-bedroom, a unit is constructed with shipping containers, uh, which is something that we have done in the past. And then the final slide is the studio bedroom apartment. And we went with the studio bedroom, uh, because of the scale and the marketability of it is all checking out. But also, uh, because they're nestled between units, thinking that people outside edges, there's egress windows for the units. So we opted to go with a studio bedroom rather than a one-bedroom unit. So that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to address, uh, questions and comments.
Mr. Chairman, we have our neighborhood planner, Sharonda Watley with her hand raised, and also August Flucker.
Okay, Sharonda, go first.
Good morning. Thank you, everybody. Again, Sharonda Watley, uh, Cleveland City Planning. Um, I just wanted to state, um, that there is, um, quite a bit of approval, um, uh, and support, um, for this level um, of design right now. Um, so at the Design Review Committee meeting, uh, Famigos Foundation, as well as, uh, Councilman Harrison were, um, in attendance and, and able to support, um, this project and speak very complimentary of it. Um, the Design Review Committee also, um, really, really, uh, appreciated the improved design and materials that they were seeing, at least, um, at this conceptual, uh, stage and phase. Um, we also, um, had quite a bit of feedback from Director Collier. Um, he is very supportive of this proposal as well. Um, and so, um, we, we commend the, um, the development and the architecture team, um, for what they've put together and what they are presenting to you all today. Um, because of the nature of the materials and because of the context and because of the planning, um, that we're doing for this area, we do want to make sure that this project is before the commission, um, at every, um, level of design in the future. So, um, they will be returning for schematic as well as for final, um, just to make sure that we, we're getting the, the, um, very best, um, details and architecture, um, and quality design, um, for this particular location. Um, one thing that did, um, come up with the design review, um, between the Design Review Committee meeting and this meeting today is a question on whether or not, um, the building is at grade or if it's a slab on grade. Um, and if one of the development team, um, members or one of the architecture team members could kind of speak to that, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to address that. Uh, typically, our go-to foundation system is, uh, a trench footing around the entire perimeter of the building and then reinforcing where the actual containers sit. Because the beauty of containers is that they are engineered in a way that allows them to span that full forty-foot distance. And, uh, for ease of running, uh, electrical plumbing, et cetera, we, we typically will do, uh, an insulated crawl space at grade, which will allow us to either push the building up a few steps, if that's what we wanted, or to keep it at grade. Based on the height requirements that, that were kind of challenging here by asking for that extra five feet, uh, I guess we're looking for a recommendation, whether we want to keep that directly at grade or to have it a step up, which would require, uh, you know, a little bit more in terms of height.
Yeah, so that may be something that we want to explore at a schematic designing level, um, whether or not the building should be elevated just a bit, since you are already going to be asking for a variance for height anyway.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. August?
Sure, um, Mr. Chair, it would be incredibly helpful, um, if we could have an aerial, so we can actually understand where this project currently exists. Um, I didn't see that in the, in the presentation. I have no context of where this is. I know it's on Seventy Second. Um, I don't know if that's, that's a way to present this now or hopefully, um, in the future so we can have a better understanding of how this fits into the neighborhood.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Chris Shefton.
Go ahead.
Um, good morning, um, Planning Commission. Um, this is Chris Shefton, Director of Real Estate Development for Famigos Foundation. On behalf of Famigos and Councilman Anthony Harrison, I just want to, um, extend our enthusiastic support for this project. As Sharonda mentioned, City Planning is working on efforts, um, to improve this area. Um, and we are currently working with Councilman Harrison to do the same. Um, one of the things that's currently being considered is a mural at the underpass. And so, um, we want to do everything we can to support, um, this project, its development and the continued revitalization of this area. Um, the development team and the architecture, uh, firm are to be commended in feedback. Um, Planning Commission and Design Review, in its intents and purposes, is to protect the citizens of the city of Cleveland from developers who do not understand the importance of quality design and what it does for our city and its people. And so I just want to commend them for, um, not taking the original feedback given, um, and just walking away, but continuing to push forward and put together something that I know is going to be a stellar product for future residents.
Um, this is Lillian. Um, I'd like to move approval for this, um, and just say, as I say that, that, um, um, I think this will be really interesting for this commission to see as the design develops, to continue to review. Um, I'd like to say that I do appreciate the density and also how this sits, um, uh, up to the street in terms of the, the entrances. And, um, and so, uh, for a project like this, I actually really appreciate where this is heading. Um, and I look forward to seeing how it continues to develop and refine.
And I'll second. Oh, sorry.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
Motion carries. Looking forward to seeing the next iteration. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Churchill Gateway, new construction. Who's here for this?
Hi, everybody. I'm Scott Skinner. I'm with NRP. I'm also here with, uh, Aaron Pacota, also with NRP, Ron Tannenbaum with RDL, and Andrew Steingas from Banky. We'll all be presenting today.
Okay, great. Thanks. If you'd all raise your right hand, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth enough, but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Could you state your name when you say I do?
Uh, Scott Skinner, I do.
Aaron Pacota, I do.
Andrew Steingas, I do.
Okay, guys, go ahead.
Great. Um, so first of all, just wanted to say thank you to everyone for your time here today. Um, you know, this is a really exciting project for us, uh, and, and more importantly, for the neighborhood as well. It's actually, I found this out recently, just, uh, a few blocks away from one of the very first projects our company ever developed twenty-five years ago. And, uh, we, we've been in front of this commission quite a bit in the last year for a number of projects. So I just wanted to start by saying, you know, we really appreciate the feedback process here, uh, with you all. And, and after we spent a few minutes walking through this project, we're looking forward to, uh, productive conversation. Uh, also wanted to say a quick thank you to the NRP team who's on the line, who put just that a tremendous amount of work into this presentation and projects. Uh, Carolyn Beamer, Don Fix, Tyler Regal, and Randy Hoover, as well as to, uh, to Heidi Gartland and her team at University Hospitals, who are playing, uh, an enormous role, uh, in this development. Uh, I'm gonna talk about this project, uh, and, and that role at a high level for just a few minutes, uh, before I hand things off to Ron and Andrew to dive into the more, uh, technical components here. Um, so the, the site is outlined on this map. Uh, Churchill Gateway is a fifty-two-unit mixed-use apartment project funded by the Ohio, the Ohio Housing Finance Agency through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Um, as you can see here, it sits between, uh, Orville and Churchill, just a few feet away from East One-O-Fifth. Uh, the site's in the heart of the Circle North area of the Glendale neighborhood, which, yeah, a- as you all may know, has seen some, some really significant redevelopment in the last few years as part of the mayor's Neighborhood Transformation Initiative, uh, including the Circle North Apartments just east of our site and, and dozens of, of single-family home rehab and redevelopments, uh, all around the site. It's a, it's a really exciting area to be starting to project in. And, and there's a lot more planned. Uh, next slide, please. So here's a zoomed-out version of that same map, just to highlight the site's proximity to University Circle and to University Hospitals. Yeah, a large part of the growth of the Glendale neighborhood has been because of this proximity. And in East One-O-Fifth here, uh, the transit line there creates a, a real connection between our site and the circle. But a lot of disparity in this area still obviously exists. And even with all the growth in the area, the housing stock, uh, really changes significantly as, as you move further north from University Circle. And, and our site, we think, represents a, a great opportunity to, to address some of the blight that still exists in this community. And, and, and even more importantly, as is the case with a lot of Cleveland, the, the healthcare access and even the the healthcare access and even the healthcare outcomes of folks who live in Circle North in Glenville or sadly tend to be much worse than the health outcomes of people who are just a few miles down the road closer to the circle. I'll go into a little more detail in just a few minutes, but those disparities are a big part of why UH is working with us to program about 3,000 square feet of commercial space in our project to reach out into the neighborhood and to address key social determinants of health. And one of those social determinants of health is access to quality affordable housing. So the units in this project, I mentioned those funded through the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, the LiveTech Program. The units of this project will all be affordable to individuals and families making between 30% and 60% of the area median income, just to ensure that as this neighborhood continues to grow, existing residents of the neighborhood will continue to have quality affordable housing opportunities. Next slide, please. So here are some photos of the existing conditions of the site. This is, the site is formerly the Harry E. Davis School, which was built in the 1960s, was also known for a while as Wade Park Elementary and very briefly as the Cleveland School of the Arts. The building itself has been vacant since around 2012. And since that time, the interior of the school has been really heavily damaged, as well as pretty heavily vandalized. And there's some really significant water damage in the ground floor and the basement. And there's quite a lot of asbestos remediation required here. When thinking about this site, we've had extensive conversations with the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, with City Planning, and with community development about the state of this site. And given all those challenges and after those conversations, we have decided that the building itself will need to be demolished for the purpose of redevelopment. You can go to the next slide, please. So this is an image of our building overlaid onto the existing site. So the project itself is one four-story building right along Orville with parking tucked behind the building. Like I mentioned, there will be 52 units. It's eight one-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms, and 23-bedroom units. So we really are targeting families here with this development. There will be porches lining the street on Orville, along with trees and some landscaping that we think will really blend in with a lot of the porches and the landscape that exists in front of the surrounding homes as well. And next slide, please. So this is a big site, almost five acres. You'll notice right away that we're only using one corner of the site. The reason for that is to leave room for additional phases of development. So we're talking both to the city and we've had a number of conversations with Famikos to determine exactly what those additional phases will look like, building use income threshold. But if you look here, we're laying out what those additional phases could potentially look like and just how we've laid out our site here in terms of building layout, infrastructure, and this throughway that will create kind of a grid really helps to allow for future phases of development. You can see some gray potential future-phase areas of building to the immediate north and then to the east of the site as well. And then the intermediate term, this was something that we had talked about in Design Review a little bit, but the intermediate term, once we've developed this proposed project and before we develop the next phase, is something we're thinking really carefully about right now. Right now, the plan is to work with the city to incorporate some sort of landscaping on the north part of the site as well, along Churchill. So the future-phase areas before they're developed won't look as empty. And then we're also working with UH and are really eager to work with other neighborhood groups too to come up with some creative outdoor programming options to really activate the area that will be reserved for future development in this interim period. Then you can go to the next slide, please. So the last thing that I want to highlight here before I turn things over to Ron and Andrew is the University Hospitals partnership and they're, for right now, we're calling an Opportunity Center. So it's highlighted in this rendering here. And as you can see, the Opportunity Center will create a much more dynamic experience for people walking or visiting the building. And this Opportunity Center will be, like I mentioned, programmed by UH. And those programs will be available to the entire neighborhood and not just residents of the apartments. They'll be available free of charge. We're actually breaking ground on a similar concept with Metro Health in the Clark Fulton neighborhood soon. But this space with UH will be, it will serve as an extension of some of the really amazing work that UH is already doing with their Otis Moss Junior Center and the Rainbow Center as well, and creating spaces outside of the four walls of their hospital to engage the neighborhood in programs that lead to better health. NRP, UH, and Famikos is working together to reach out to the community to determine the best mix of what that programming should actually be. I think we actually have a call later today. But some of the potential uses of this space that we've been talking about could be things like community baby showers to help address the infant mortality crisis in this neighborhood, workforce training to help folks secure jobs, an extension of UH's Food for Life Program, which helps provide healthy food options for the community, or even a senior gathering space, which, as far as I understand, is just a huge need in this area. And again, just to reiterate, this space is meant to be a community space and open to the larger neighborhood and to serve as a real asset for the larger neighborhood. And then the last thing I'll mention before I turn things over is that the physical location of this opportunity on the southwest portion of the site is placed there because it's meant to be visible to folks driving down East 105th. It's tough to tell from this viewpoint, but if you are in East 105th, which is right to the left of your screen, you can actually see this building from there. So it's meant to be both visible to folks driving down East 105th and it's also meant to be accessible to folks who are accessing this site via public transit and getting off on East 105th. So with that, just a little introduction to the project, I'm going to turn things over to Ron to dive into the design here.
You, Scott. I think maybe we go to the next slide, please. This will give you a sense, a more technical sense of how the building is situated on the site. To the bottom of the page is Orville Avenue. To the top of the page is Churchill Avenue. To the left of the page is East 105th. The building is situated up on Orville Avenue. And it's a mixed-use building, primarily R2 residential, four stories. As Sue said, it's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. And we do have four townhomes as well. And there are 80 parking spots that we're dedicating to this first phase. And basically, the whole of the building is about 72,500 square feet with a footprint of 18,250 square feet. If we go to the next slide, please. This will give you a sense of the ground floor plan. On the upper left of the plan, you can see the Career Opportunity Center that UH is partnering with the project on. And it's going to be mainly community rooms, which are very flexible in space, opening up to each other to be able to have larger gatherings, as well as being able to close up to have some separated use for them. There's an entrance off of Orville, as well as an entrance to the north side facing Churchill, facing the parking lot so that people can either come in from the street, from the general community, or actually directly drive there and park there to attend whatever gatherings are going on there. To the right of that, there's a chunk of the ground floor plan that are dedicated to the general amenities of the project, community rooms, fitness centers, offices, things of that nature for the residential portion. And then on the right facing Orville, you'll see on the bottom of the page there are the four townhome entries. Because of the townhome entries, we're raising up the entire floor plate 18 inches to allow for them to have the front porch feel and look of the community. If we go to the next slide, please. In terms of the elevations, these are technical elevations and I'll get to the color elevations as well. But I think these will give you the sense of the overall buildup. We're using vinyl siding in multiple directions, as well as fiber cement panels in order to break up the facade, give it a more appropriate scale for the residential typology and relate it to the overall context of the neighborhood. We're hipping the roofs and doing things like that in order to also create that similar relationship to the neighborhood. At the bottom of the page, you can see the four townhome entries, which stand out a little bit in terms of the way that they're created with the front porch to give them their own sense of identity within the overall context of the building as well. If we go to the next slide. This is the facade facing north, facing Churchill. We wanted to keep it within the same context. We didn't want to differentiate it and create a one-sided building that really only related on that one facade. So we've wrapped it around and brought that same language all the way around the building. If we go to the next slide, please. These are the side elevations, the shorter side elevations, the east and west elevation. The west elevation is the one that is the community center that's facing 105th. If we go to the next slide, please. This is the overall color elevations. I think this will give you a truer sense of the overall feel of it. We've used a lighter color to pop the portions of the building out and darker colors sort of infilling in between to give it even more of a pop, even more of a separation between the building elements and to create the more residential sense of identity that we are trying to play off of in terms of relating to the general community and to the actual street of Orville. Some of the buildings facing it are brick. Some of them are wood-style siding. And so we're trying to relate to all that and tie it together here on the building itself. The front porches are lighter to pop out of the facade and give those the sense of entry that we're looking for and the sense of identity that we're looking for. The center awning is the entrance to the overall residential portion. And the left awning there that you see is the entrance to the community center. And from that awning all the way to the left is the community center itself. I think that, I think Andrew, I think if you continue on from here and I think we can talk about some of the greenery and how that relates.
Thank you, Ron. My name is Andrew Steingas. I'm a landscape architect with Banky Landscape Architecture. Next slide, please. Early on in this process, we were discussing various green community initiatives and there was an expressed interest in using a native plant list or species derived from a native species. So our planting palette primarily reflects this. Additionally, we know that the city of Cleveland has expressed interest and desires to diversify the urban tree canopy throughout the city. So we are using a variety of tree species to help forward this initiative. On Churchill Avenue to the east of the site, there are existing street trees. However, in front of this development, there currently isn't. So we are extending those street trees down the, down Orville Avenue at the existing spacing as well. We want to create an exciting plant palette, so we are using a variety of colors, seasonal interest, and textures. The last thing I will call to your attention on this page is at the northwest corner of the building, you will see a playground and that, I will mention more about that in the coming slides. Next slide, please. This slide just shows some of our details. Really, the only main thing to note is the fencing in the middle, which will be around the playground and around the property boundary. It is an ornamental fence that is typical with many of NRP's projects and standards. Next slide, please. And this final slide here just shows the Orbis Fitness Playground, which coincides with a lot of the fitness objectives and health objectives that Scott mentioned earlier in his presentation. It also shows some of the furnishings that will be used on this project, such as bike racks, benches, and a trash receptacle. So that being said, I'll turn it back over to Scott, who will wrap up this presentation.
Thank you very much. You can go to the last slide here, please, the next one. And again, just really wanted to thank the commission, all the members here for their time. And we're here to answer any questions you have.
I have a question. You showed the overall site plan. Is there just like a conceptual master plan for the site, even if it's just early? I don't mean your site, I mean the overall site.
Sure, sure. So can you go, I think there's one or two slides before this. Two more. And then one more up, and that should be the kind of master idea. So.
I meant for the whole site, not just your building.
So it's a little, it's a little hard to see. There's some gray buildings that are laid out in here. We kept them really light because this is still an open conversation that we're having with Famikos, with the city, and with the neighborhood. This is how we've imagined laying out the site in future phases. But again, it's still open to a lot of feedback and discussions.
The only reason I ask is that this is also a very long block. And I saw this originally, it brought to mind, and this is for Famikos and you to think about, was that where you're showing that parking lot that would sit between all four cul-de-sacs, it raised the question for me if there ought to be a split-block road cut through here to make smaller blocks and to make a more kind of connected pedestrian experience long-term. And I can't really tell if it shows this. It shows kind of like a vertical parking lot, if you will. But that, to me, from just like an urban design perspective and sort of safe streets and blocks, seems to me like, if you look at the block to the north of this, there are two streets that cut through that create more of a kind of small-block experience. So I know it's not to decide today. I just think you guys ought to consider that long-term so that this really starts to, you know, break down this long block, if you will.
No, absolutely. And really appreciate that feedback. And there are, it's tough to see here, there are curb cuts on Churchill and on Orville, so it is meant to kind of go all the way through and break up this long site. But to your point, you know, I think there's some creative thinking we can do around making it a little more pedestrian-friendly as you're walking through too.
Right. Well, what I do want is it to be walking through a parking lot. Like what's hard to see is if you, it looks like you designed it to be just the drive-through parking lot as opposed to a street with sidewalks that starts to create these smaller blocks. So I would like to push guys to really think about that, so not to just have a driveway through a parking lot.
That's great feedback. Thank you.
Also, I would like to, oh, go ahead, Maurice.
No, I was going to call you.
I would also, and this might be a question for Famikos. It would be interesting to see how the parcels between your building and East 105th might play out in terms of what happens, how it reaches back, because there's development that's going on along. There are, it has been completed, how that ties back to create more of an urban or a campus feel.
Yeah, absolutely. I believe Famikos opens these parcels. I think, I'm not sure if Chris is on the line still.
As a matter of fact, Chris has her hand raised.
Oh, great.
Oh, Lillian and August. First, Lillian, that is fantastic feedback and actually feedback that we've actually been getting for quite some time from the City of Cleveland Department of Community Development in terms of the mega-blocks that exist in our neighborhood. And one of the potential solutions proposed is exactly what you're talking about in terms of a cut-through between streets like Orville and Churchill, like Lee and Orville. And so it is certainly something that we would support. Flucker, to your question, so we do own 1355 East 105th Street, which is a small, commercial, mixed-use building there on 105. The building immediately north of that is the, one of the last, if not the last remaining Carnegie Library on the east side of Cleveland. The owner, who I've spoken to recently, has a youth in mind. But of course, the pandemic has hit and so lots of folks' plans have been stymied. But she certainly has a vision for the property. And then there's a little tax preparation site on the corner, but we have had some conversations with them about what could potentially be. So the point is that we do have, as you all are. So the point is that we do have, as you all are aware, through the My Glenville Plan, a fuller vision for 105 that would include attempting to tie these uses together so that it does feel, you do have the feeling of increased density and more of that campus feel. As to the project itself, we are happy to continue to work with NRP to bring this project to life. The reason why we think the project is important is because it fits in with our concept of the mixed income community. As you all are aware, there are lots of new housing going up, new apartment buildings that are pushing the pricing market, yes, creating wealth for the residents and homeowners in that community, but also pushing price points to a point where the traditional folks who've lived in this neighborhood may not be able to afford. So projects like this helps to ensure that affordability remains and is longstanding in the community.
I'm not, I'm not sure if Lilian is trying to make a comment. You're.
Can you not go to the more detailed site plan? Because I think this is where I might have a worry about this. So go to the detailed site plan.
Trying to, it's a slow.
Right there. So the real concern is that, and are you here for conceptual or final approval? Schematic. So good. I would say good. Because the real concern here is how this is organized at the moment. Kind of prevents the fact that this could be a mid-block cross, mid-block connection because of the, the, the parking that you're actually probably counting that's along this. So my suggestion is that in the motion, that we would make a motion that states clearly that the planning commission prioritizes that this be actually a roadway that cuts through with sidewalks and that you, in your next iteration, when you come back to us, you reconfigure the parking so that that is possible. Because if we were to, if you were to build this, it makes it almost impossible to achieve a mid-block crosswalk with, with either an alley or a street that is, it cuts through. So that's my major comment about this, which is that you rework this site plan to, to, to further that idea so that we can work together with you to achieve that mid-block connection.
So Lilian, that was a motion, correct?
That was a motion. That was a motion for schematic approval with a reconfiguration of the parking and the site plan to include this future or in this phase mid-block connection.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second it. Downing.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
I, I have one comment to piggyback on Lilian. Is it necessary to have two vehicular ingress into the site? Could one, does it have to be? Does it, the majority of this path be pedestrian? I don't know. Just throwing it out there.
I don't know. Maybe they could study it. I mean, I'm open to this because I'm more interested in the pedestrian. But sometimes when there's vehicular traffic, it also, there's also a different sense of security too. So I'm open. I just want them to study it and come back to us with a different.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Call the world, please.
Owen.
Yes.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Yes.
Slive.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Thank you. Waterford Bluffs New Construction seeking final approval. This receives schematic approval on July 17. Who's here for this? Looks like we have Michael Kristoff.
Good morning. This is Denver Broker. I'm here this morning with Jason Burick, my colleague at Vokon, and Josh Walright from Stone Lake Companies.
Okay, can you all raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do, Denver.
Jason Burick, I do.
I do, Josh Walright.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, please.
All right. Good morning, everyone. We're really excited to be here with you this morning. This is the final step in our public design review process for this project. We've been working with you, Downtown Flats Design Review Committee, members of Planning Commission, Tremont West Development Corporation, the Duck Island Block Club, other neighbors and constituents in Ohio City and Tremont over the course of the last year and developing this very important parcel. The collaboration has been very successful. We thank everyone for their involvement. And today we're seeking final design approval for this property. Yesterday, we met with the Downtown Flats Design Review Committee. There were a few conditions for their approval, which we've accepted and have already engaged in pursuing. So today, we're here to show you the final details of the project, landscaping, lighting, final materials and some architectural tweaks that we've made since the last time we were in front of you. Jason Burick will take you through those presentation.
Good morning. We're going to highlight some of the minor modifications to the design that have been made over the last few months. And like Denver said, we're going to show you the kind of detailed site lighting and the landscape and the materiality of the building. So that's what I'm primarily going to focus on. If there's something else that you see along the way as we flip through the slides that you'd like me to expound upon, just let me know. So with that, let's start flipping through these slides. The next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. This is the ground level plan of the building, just a couple of minor modifications that have happened to the site since the last time we've been with you. On the east side of the building, which is the west 20th Street, there used to be a trash enclosure that was at the ground floor of the building near that move-in zone. And we've since eliminated that and integrated all of the trash and larger trash storage directly into the building. So we've eliminated that small one-story protrusion from the building. At the far western end of the site, which is the upper left-hand corner of this page, there is a service drive that occurs. And the sole purpose of that service drive is to service a transformer that'll be located on the west side of the building. That road will have no other traffic on it. There will be bollards out at the street curve that'll be removable. And the, in the event that the transformer needs serviced once every X number of years, the bollards would be removed. The purpose of the bollards is to eliminate the possibility of vehicles from possibly turning into this drive. The future of this street, the design, future design of the Lorraine Avenue cycle track is, is still in development. And so, but we do know that there is to be a dedicated bike lane directly adjacent to the curb, the cartway. And there may or may not be some landscaping outboard, outboard of that as well. So again, our, our intent was, was to maintain the safety and the continuity of the Lorraine Avenue cycle track as much as possible. So we really minimize that curb cut use of bollards. There will be a fence that extends from the western edge. It's set back from the face of the building, about 10 feet, but it extends from the western edge due west to the property line. And then we'll come south and meet up with the bridge abutment that is there. There's kind of a steep drop off. And with the transformer and other service oriented stuff, we want to keep people from kind of going over the edge there to try and get down onto Columbus. What else has changed about this? I think that is it. So if we go to the next slide. And just a typical floor plan, just to refresh your memory, this is the second floor plan. The areas in purple are community resident amenity spaces. On the left, there's the, the community room. And on the far right-hand side, purple, you see fitness and yoga space. And the rest of the units kind of stack up through the rest of the building. So if we go to the next slide. The next slide. The next slide. The next. And the next. And this is the primary elevation along Lorraine. Not a lot has changed since the last time you've seen this. We made a few tweaks to the corner of the building, kind of created this angled soffit up at the top of the building. That kind of creates this little eyebrow or kind of a bird's beak. Kind of cantilevers out over the rest of the roof. And we've made some few minor modifications to kind of normalize and equalize the spacing of these vertical wood piers. We've also added some balconies to the building, which you'll see in some following slides. Go next. And the next slide. And just to refresh everybody's memory, this is the cycle track, people rolling back east and west. And the intent is to do kind of a large scale art installation inside this gallery space. It'd be highly visible from the street at night. And this image shows how permeable that ground floor of the building is and how much glass and connectivity to other residence spaces are inside the building. Next fit, next slide. Next. Next. Next slide. That was a duplicate, my bad. Next. And this shows the east side of the building and the terminus of the west 20th Street at that north wing, which is kind of on the right-hand side. We've added a couple of columns of balconies there. We've added some balconies around the other north and west side of the building as well. The next slide. Visitor parking garage entrance, which is kind of open to the air. And the materiality of the building has continued in, into that covered parking area. Next slide. And a view of the northeast corner, that recess is a lounge on the fifth floor of the building. It's views out to the north and to the northeast. You go, next slide. A view from the northwest corner, the wood volume is the fitness space. The rest of this out here is going to be basically planted with a low-mow grass. It only need to be mowed maybe a couple of times a year. So it's a kind of a meadow. Next slide. And a view looking back towards the community room, this area in the light green in the foreground is a dog park. There'll be a four or five foot black chain link enclosure around the dog park. The next slide. And a view looking east. Kind of added a few bits and pieces. There's some vertical metal mesh that connects the balconies on the west side of the building, which is kind of left side here. Left, the west side of the building faces out. Those units on the corner are going to have a spectacular view of the tower, the west side market. Next. And a close-up view of what it feels like to be down on the street. Again, we've developed the bike room at this whole western corner of the building where there's an ample amount of bike storage. There's some outdoor bike parking spaces, exposed aggregate concrete that'll come up to the broom finish concrete on the sidewalk. And there's some stone benches that are kind of more square-ish in, in reality than what's shown here. Next slide. And this is the final material palette. On the upper left is the face brick. It's kind of a more, slightly more informal. It has some imperfections and a little bit of character around the edges. Some of the bricks are kind of a little bit of warped and they have a little bit of flashing visible on them. So it creates a little bit of depth and variation. On the right-hand side is the profiled aluminum siding for the building. It is a 16-inch high panel and with four ribs on it. So each one of those ribs is about two and a half inches. So it's not super small scale. It's not super large. We think it is, we evaluated against multiple other profiles and we feel that the scale is most appropriate for this building. In the bottom middle is the aluminum wood look siding, which is a, a product by Longboard Dark Cherry. Complements the brick really well. And then there's three colors of flat metal panel that'll be used throughout spandrels and other accent portions of the building. It's kind of a dark iron ore color. A solid panel that'll match the profiled metal siding and then a bone white color. Go next slide. And here's some exterior application images. It's always helpful to see how these things are, you know, what the reality of them is. And so that on the far left is the profiled metal siding. In the middle is a installation using the Longboard aluminum siding. And on the right just shows how the flat metal panels will appear in spandrel areas of the building. If you go next slide. And here is an example of one of the hung balconies on the building. It has a mesh panel that the balustrades, it has hangers that'll come up and connect to the building. This is all aluminum, pre-manufactured aluminum product. So it shouldn't rust or streak along the building. Next slide. And so this is the landscape plan that is developed by DeRue, the landscape architect. I don't know if Jamie is on this call or not. Is Jamie Schwartzberg on this call?
No.
I don't think, I don't think so. Okay. This is the, the ground floor of the building. We've developed the landscape along Lorraine Avenue to create kind of a seasonal interest. There's a combination of kind of more winter of evergreens. It'll be give a kind of a winter prominence. And then perennials, it'll give kind of summer color. We've placed several street trees along Lorraine. They are on our property as opposed to in the tree lawn. And if you all remember, there's a, a whole bunch of utilities directly under the tree lawn or the amenity strip of this building that made it impossible for us to actually locate the trees closer to the street. And in lieu of street trees, we've, we've planted the amenity strip with a, a low-growth sumac, which is a salt tolerant evergreen. It's actually not an evergreen bush. It's a, it's a deciduous bush. So it'll be more full in winter and less full in, or full in summer, less full in winter. But it's a salt resistant tree. It's been used throughout the city and several other developments successfully. There's trees along the west side of the building around the dog park. And if, just a couple of little groupings further north along the west side. And then we've, we've strived really hard to continue this landscape treatment down west 20th so that the experience along Lorraine and one, and west 20th is a kind of an integrated experience to take you all the way up to the drive that goes down into the parking garage. The next slide. And this is landscaping up on the second floor, the terrace of the building that faces west around the community room. There's a combination of synthetic turf. And the rest of the area is a, a cedum mixture that'll occur up close to and adjacent to kind of walkout terraces at that second floor of the building. And next slide. Here's a list of all of our planting materials. I'm not going to name every one of them because I'm not a botanist or a landscape architect. I don't have super detailed knowledge of these. But basically the trees along the top, and as you can see with the shrubs and the perennials in the roof plantings, strong effort to bring some color. And in the evergreen category, we love the kind of contrast between the more yellowish greens and then these kind of silvers from the junipers will create a really beautiful winter interest. And in lieu of mulch, we're using basically slate chips at the bottom right-hand corner. So the area along the rain, you know, the, along the frontage of the building, we'll use this kind of gray slate chips as the, as the mulch, which I think is going to be lovely. which I think is going to be lovely. And example, bike rack. And then there's these kind of rough hewn stone blocks that'll act as seating adjacent to the lobby and further west along the bike room. And then there's a grouping in your kind of about halfway point down Lorraine as well. Next slide. Now, this is the site lighting. We've we've created a kind of a comprehensive lighting approach to the exterior of the building that we believe will complement the adjacent streetscape developments. What's interesting about this is there seems to be very little continuity in terms of the design, you know, throughout various parts of the city. They all kind of have their own little character. I'm not sure why quite why that is. But down at the market, they use a the traditional glass acorn fixture that is a CPP fixture. And then along the bridge, there are some lower scaled light fixtures, but they're of a different style. So right now we are proposing adding in the orange dots. Those are the CPP decorative poles along Lorraine that'll continue the streetscape character that you find down at the market. And then along Lorraine, we're actually going to switch to a different pole top fixture that is still short. We're going to be moving a couple of the Cobra heads that exist on the site across the street on West 20th. There's several poles on this. There's definitely a, yeah, there's enough poles on this site to go around. So a lot of these poles are going to be taken down, power put underground. And as a result, we're going to relocate a couple of the Cobra heads with the new city standard across the other side of the street on West 20th. Around the perimeter of the building on the west and the north, these little yellow dots are a wall mounted fixture. It's meant to provide some general illumination, create a general sense of safety around the kind of more wooded areas of the site. And then around the lobby, there's a series of bollards and a few more bollards at the bike room. And there is some facade mounted lighting. You see in these little tiny red dots that are close to the lobby or that blue traffic signal. And those are wall mounted up lights that kind of accent the wood piers on the building. For the next slide. And just a list of the light fixtures on the left is the bollard around the lobby and the bike room. Very simple, clean design, light emitted from that kind of hollow square in the middle. The wall mounted fixtures are these angular ones you see in the top of the second column, the vector. And then a series of post mounted heads in that same exact family that will march along Lorraine. You're familiar with the LED Cobra head and then the acorn fixture from CPP. And one of the things they asked us to look at yesterday was if that CPP decorative acorn has an option for a cutoff on one side of it and a cutoff accessory. We've seen evidence from nighttime photography on some of our other projects that the acorn fixture throws light up into the units and basically illuminates your ceiling. So if you're sitting there at 9:30 at night reading a book, your ceiling is basically bright orange. So we want to try to find a solution to mitigate that effect from that fixture. And then the wall accent is the cinder fixture, the white one. This is just a an uplight. It'll be mounted kind of up above the third floor of the building and illuminate up about 25 feet. I think that's the end, but I'm not sure. Can you go next? And that's the end. So at this point, we'll open it up to your comments.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Santoro with his hand raised.
Anthony.
Thank you, Chair. Commission, Mr. Booker did a great job covering the D R A C comments from yesterday and the discussion. The committee was very receptive to the project. There were a few items that they wanted them to continue to refine specifically around the lighting and traffic. And traffic is going to be one item that I want to break up now. Yesterday evening, City Planning received a letter of concern from a representative of the Duck Island Block Club regarding traffic congestion at West 20th and Lorraine and possible cut through through the neighborhood, which they are not in favor of. And I know that there was a lot of discussion at yesterday's meeting regarding possible solutions to it and doing independent traffic study. So I don't know if Jason or Denver, if you guys want to kind of walk us through your discussions that were had with traffic and engineering as you examined it and what you guys are committed to doing, looking at that traffic issue moving forward.
Yes, I can respond to that. Can you go back to the ground floor plan of the presentation?
Do you know what slide that is?
I do not. That one? Yes.
Thank you.
Over the course of the the design of the project and the interface with the Tremont West Development Corporation and the block clubs, the meetings for which Tremont West convened, there have been some concerns stated around the intersection of West 20th and Lorraine. Specifically, someone on West 20th facing let's see, south, left of the drawing and wanting to turn left onto the bridge. The current situation is that the lighting controls there are very short for anyone traveling north or south on 20th, which means that if there, if someone wanting to turn, you can block several cars behind you. And and then that leads to people avoiding the lighted intersection and navigating through the Duck Island neighborhood to get onto Lorraine in a different way. So that's been the stated concern. We did through Mac Mall, I spoke with a traffic engineer. And his response at the time had been that they would address this through signal control, reprogramming the signal when these this project came online and the additional 240, 41 residents would further affect the intersection. In later community meetings, the conversation elevated in terms of it is an issue now. It is not just something that needs addressed with 241 units, but it's a real issue now. And minus involvement with the city of Cleveland, we can't change the right of way, the right of way is something that we own. So Tremont West committed to furthering discussions with Traffic Department. And at the Design Review Committee meeting yesterday, the group made the condition that we hire an independent traffic engineering consultant to analyze the intersection and make recommendations. So we have embarked on that as of yesterday afternoon, identified a consultant and Stanley Companies is contacting that consultant for a proposal. And we will proceed with that engineering study on behalf of the project. But really, it starts to be on behalf of the existing condition as well. And that's where we are. So we're committed to, you know, the process. Stanley Companies has no issue with following through with this. So we are doing that. There is, we've analyzed the right of way here. It's a 27 foot wide street. And depending on if the traffic study requires an additional lane, turning lane, there is room to massage the curbs, whether it's the east curb or the west curb, to provide the additional footage to have three lanes at this intersection.
Mr. Chairman, we have Khalid from Tremont West.
Go ahead, Khalid.
Good evening. Well, it's almost evening. Good afternoon, everyone. Khalid Hawthorne for Tremont West. So appreciate all the commentary around the traffic issues. That's something that came up pretty consistently through the process that escalated towards the end. But, you know, it's a very tricky intersection there based on historic roads that were there and the bridge that was constructed and all the different movements of pedestrians and cyclists and everything coming through there. So a lot of issues going on. So it's definitely worth some some additional study there. And also the through traffic, this area, especially with the intro development and the shutdown of gearing and Abbott, every, all the traffic is going through West 20th now. And it has caused some issues in the community. There was a, apparently there was a child that was slightly, well, not slightly injured by a car recently. But it's something that the community doesn't want to become a bigger problem at a later date. So that's, we we sent letters of conditional support based on those traffic studies.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have no other hands raised.
Okay, Commissioner members.
Now we have John Zaak and Elaine Borowski.
Go ahead, John.
Hello. Elaine, why don't you go first?
Okay, sounds good. So Commissioner, thank you for having us. Three of us from residents from the Duck Island Club or Duck Island neighborhood. I mean, as you heard, there was a letter sent from our block club regarding this. I think we just want to say, first of all, we all are very much in favor of the of the project overall and very much in favor of the development in the neighborhood. That is not the issue. It is the traffic. And so I guess as long as the condition is not simply to have a have an independent review, but to actually do something about the the road that is being proposed here. We did send some pictures. We've, the pictures to me do not really depict what it really looks like. The little cars on this diagram look kind of tiny in comparison to what they really would be. In that, in the sense that really two cars in and you are blocking pretty much the whole entrance to that, to coming out of the garage. And so, you know, we're just asking, but we thank you. And we already have an issue where folks are coming through the neighborhood from this old Lorraine Road. And this would just complicate things. And we have, you know, over two dozen little children in our neighborhood. So we just ask you to take this quite seriously. Thank you. John?
My name is John Zaak and I'm representing Grove Court Condominiums, which are just below where the where the the site plan cuts off. We have 46 units here. And we don't, we we support the project. But there is already a traffic problem and this will just exacerbate that. So I'm glad to hear that somebody, some professionals will take a look at this because we think it's fairly simple, that we just need to add a right turn lane. And then they need to adjust their ingress egress because right now we'll have a serious stacking problem very quickly. The problem for Duck Island, which is a problem for Grove Court, is that we have two tunnels that go underneath the bridge. And a lot of us here at Grove Court rather than already, rather than deal with the traffic light at 20th and Lorraine, we just cut through Duck Island. And that's just going to, you know, and that in part, that's part of the, that's part of the problem that Elaine is talking about. She lives on the other side of the bridge. So if somebody's willing to look at this professionally, we're, we're happy to hear that. And and I want to just reiterate once more, this is not at all a criticism of the project, maybe tweaking a little bit the ingress egress, but we're very much in favor of the of the project.
Thank you.
Hi, can I interject? May I?
Can I add add one more additional comment? Real quick?
Who's speaking?
I'm sorry, I tried to raise my hand, couldn't quite get it. I'm, there's some bad.
Go ahead, Dave.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Yeah, I also am very happy about the project and many of the residents are. And I think some of the logical egress and ingress problems that can happen if another turning lane is not added in will also affect people coming from downtown trying to get into the project. With people coming from old Lorraine Road trying to turn in, they often will try to scoot into traffic, cutting off actually entrance into West 20th into the building. I'm also concerned about things like Uber drivers, Uber Eats. Where where is all this traffic going to come in and turn around? I just see this area as being very, very active for 240 people moving in in excess of what we're already dealing with. I'm a resident on the other side of the bridge. And I just want to interject those thoughts as to why I think putting a turning lane would certainly free up the flow and allow, in my mind, half of half traffic, half of somebody wanting to go east, I'm sorry, west, to be allowed to do that freely. And it just makes sense to me, a logical addition to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Hey, Anthony, are you still on the phone?
I am still here, sir.
Yeah, can you make sure engineering gets involved with this?
Yeah, we'll kick, we'll kick it over to them, get their input and have them work closely with the architect and developer and whoever their third party is as they're continuing to review this to make sure that a solution can be found.
Super, thank you.
I believe Khalid had another comment.
Oh, sorry, I had a question. Just this is for final approval, correct?
Yes, it is.
That is correct.
Is it possible, this is to the chair, I think, is it possible to make a motion to approve this, but to have this issue come back to us? Just the the layout or the the traffic? Meaning, I don't know if we've ever done that before because it's this different type of issue than a design issue like signage or something coming back. But is it possible to require them to come back for that? I don't know.
You you can do final approval contingent upon a solution for traffic. And then we can have engineering. And I think I know where you're coming from. You don't want the solution to be worse than what's there now, so.
And I don't want to hold up the project, but I also want to hold them accountable because I think that's what the residents are.
So I think you could do, you know, a final approval contingent upon engineering coming back.
Or or we could, we could, we could say it could go to staff. And if they can't come to an agreement, then it has to come back to us.
Okay, go ahead, make that motion.
You know what I'm saying? So if it comes to a solution and everybody's happy, it goes. But if they can't, then it does have to come back to us.
Okay, go ahead, make the motion.
Okay, so I'm going to move for approval with the condition that a solution be developed and agreed upon on with traffic engineering and with all the parties around the the drive and the traffic. And that will go to staff and only come back to us if they cannot reach a solution.
I'll second that. Downing.
We have a motion, second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slick.
Question carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see what we have next. So do you have a director's report?
There is no director's report for today.
Okay. Then we are adjourned. Thanks for everyone to spend your time with me today.
Excellent, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Have a great weekend.